Okay, so what we're here for tonight is to hear public input on the possibility of retaining the ordinance with prohibited marijuana facilities in the village of Elton. It's not a situation where we have somebody that's looking to come in. When we first enacted the ordinance a year ago, it was done with the stipulation that we review it in a year. Trustee Schumberg brought it back up as the year is up and asked that we follow through on that obligation. So that's where we're at, why we're here. There is no decision to be made tonight, there will be no voting. It's simply to allow input from the residents and those impacted by it. We had an ordinance committee meeting, we felt none of us really had a strong opinion either way, that it was something that we needed to hear from the residents before we would pursue the issue further. So that's where we're at. I believe we're going to try to hold to a three-minute time for anybody that's speaking. Please introduce yourself at the podium.
And I do want to add though that we did talk with two Joes, and he had no feelings, basically he felt the same way as us. It's the law now, there's nothing, he didn't have a strong...
And actually, I spoke with him again tonight, and he echoed that same opinion. He also did share that he talked to other law enforcement agencies that had jurisdiction over some of these facilities, and that there was a high amount of respect for the type of facilities that those people are seeing out there. So, he again, either way for him, depending on the feelings of the community.
Right. And again, like you said, nobody's approached us to come into town, it's just we're reviewing the ordinance.
Right.
So with that, I guess we'll open it up to public comment for those that wish to speak.
Hello there? Okay, so I've got to remove my mask, I have three children at home with influenza B. I do not have it yet, but I'm trying to just keep my germs to myself, but I'm going to take off for me. So, my question, I guess, starts off with, are you taught, like, is it medicinal, is it recreational, like, sorry. My name is Melissa Helmuth, and I'm a resident of Elton for 12 years, I'm a wife and mother of five, one being a foreign exchange student, and I'm a paraprofessional at Laker Elementary. So, I'm, now, I guess, is it, like, are you guys, are, will there be boundaries put down of medicinal, recreational, I guess that's just one of my concerns. So, I come tonight to stand before you as a concerned parent, a village member, and a caretaker of our youth. I'm not opposed to marijuana, for health reasons, I do have concerns for our youth. A few years ago, there were some girls that were caught doing sexual acts in the cedar bushes down by the park for cigarettes. We have a youth who makes multiple trips to the different gas stations to pick up liquor to give it to the high school students. I could tell you story after story of our youth, from kindergartners on up to fifth graders, trying to act like the adults in their life, out acting it out on the playground. Even a fifth grader is being offered $50 to take a vape pen to school to try and get other kids to smoke the vape pen at school. So, I'm concerned as a caretaker of our youth that legalizing marijuana, bringing it into our town, will not only, it won't even, it won't stay in our village, but it will expand to the schools, it will expand other where, other places. It will slowly open it up to our youth. So the last few years, there's been so much effort that has been put into restoring the relationship between the youth of the town and the law enforcement. Kickball with the cops, give backpack giveaways, the county street fairs, the candy checks and hot dogs at Halloween, bingo, Christmas in Elton, there's so much more. Like, if we stop and think for a minute, if we bring it in and allow it to be here within town, is it going to open it up to the youth then partaking? Our town is starting to grow again, young families with kids are moving in, T-ball, baseball, soccer, practices and games take place here all the time. There's Saturdays where you can't get a parking spot out there, they're parked two and three deep, where families are watching their young children participate in sports. How many parents are going to want to sit next to a child, or have their children sit next to someone who's smoking marijuana while watching the game? I can tell you, I live right downtown, and there are days that my family cannot enjoy our backyard, because the neighbor next to us is smoking stand, smoking marijuana, standing next to his back door, and it drifts into our backyard. If our windows are open in the summertime, our house doesn't smell like dinner, it doesn't smell like fresh laundry or fresh cut grass or the fresh air, it smells of the sweet burning leaves from the man standing at his door beside us, and it drifts through our house. And my kids say to me frequently, "Why do we have to smell it just because he's smoking it?" If you legalize it within our village limits, that's going to make it that much worse for my family alone. So my children, my foreign exchange student's 16, my children are 15, 13, 12, and nine, my husband and I have been trying to teach our children to be aware of their surroundings and to be watchful as they are out and about. We have just recently started letting them ride their bikes to the park on their own to take bike trips around town. Our small, family-friendly town atmosphere, where everyone looks out for each other, will change into us having to be careful to hide, to have our children. I mean, there's times now that we have to, in years gone past, we've had to keep our kids in the house, we couldn't allow them to go out and ride their bikes in the front yard, because there was a drunk man who lived across the road, he would go from gas station to gas station, and has fallen over in our front yard before, and hit his head on our stone in our front yard. And so, it just makes me scared, if we're legalizing it and bringing it into town, is it something that we're going to have to be careful, and we're going to have to watch out for even more? So, please keep in mind of all the young people in the village, the young ones included, think of how it's going to affect them if you bring it in. Again, I'm not opposed to it, if it's done within the right parameters, and I guess I'm just asking to be mindful of that as you're setting the boundaries if this is something brought in, so.
Thank you. I would like to address something for you, so you know that it is already legal anywhere in Michigan, including the village of Elton, and that anybody in our village could grow up to 12 plants for their personal consumption in their homes, and they can only possess 10 ounces of it, and they are allowed to give the rest away. That's what the state law currently is. And so I didn't know if you were aware of that.
I was.
Okay, because, well, you were saying something about legal, bringing it into our town and legalizing it?
Well, bringing the business and...
A dispensary?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you understood that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Do you want this, do you want me to keep it? Do you...
Yeah.
Oops.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, is that what we're talking about, a dispensary in town? I mean, is that the topic for tonight?
Yes. That was the, there's apparently up to, I think it's six or eight, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact number, but the way that the state set it up, there's different levels of things, from a small dispensary where they're only allowed to purchase medical, either medical, recreational, or both, and you can't smoke it on that property, it's just to purchase it, and you know that it's come from a source that can be traced if it was bad marijuana for medical or recreational purposes, they would be able to trace where it came from. And then there's the next one above that, where they could eat edibles and smoke it right in the building, and then there's where they process it and dry it and grow it, and all different levels of stuff, and none of the same people can own any of those, they can, can't own, like, multiples. So a grower can also process and then bring it and sell it. And so we were looking at the smallest one, which was the dispensary, that people would be able to purchase it, and that would be it. They couldn't smoke it there, they're not growing it on the property, they're not doing any of that there. So we just wanted public input on that.
Is that things like gummy bears and other things?
Those are things that, when we discussed it, those are the edibles, and those are things that we are allowed to build into the ordinance to say not to allow those kind, not to allow child-designed candies and things like that. Those can be built into the ordinance, but we haven't done any of that, because we wanted public opinion.
So drafting an actual ordinance is an expensive endeavor, by the time you bring the village attorney in and things, so we felt it was best to get the feedback before we undertook that expense. So, yeah, that's, there's a lot of things, number of locations, or we can limit the number of licenses, if so to speak, citing whether or not we want them, you know, within a thousand feet of a place of worship, educational facility, or different places.
Educational daycare center, whatever.
And then, again, the types of products that are available to sell, the hours of operation, there's a lot of those details that can be built into the ordinance. Again, based on your feedback, you know, we can work those things in if that is the situation.
I have a question. So, last November, correct, there was a vote that was on this topic?
Yes, sir.
Right, and that vote was, what?
To legalize the recreational consumption of marijuana in the state of Michigan.
No, but was there anything that's specific to the village?
The council, we had to opt in or opt out because the state passed the law?
I'm asking for clarity here, is all the reason I'm asking this question.
When was that, when we had to opt, the state said you had to opt in or opt out?
Correct, and we passed that ordinance probably December.
Yeah, to opt out.
To opt out.
With the law process that we would...
Because we reviewed it when you had this.
Because the state didn't have any other regulations in place until November of this year, correct?
So to, to put a dispensary in the town of Elton comes down to a council vote, not a vote of the residents?
Correct, yeah, correct.
So did it need to do the referendum?
Could it be made into a vote?
I don't know, I'm asking you about this.
No, it can't, because it's statewide, so all we can do as the ordinance would be, which would be to limit what you wanted, or things like that.
Should we come from another background?
Albeit caring is how you're getting the public opinion.
Okay.
We can always set the boundaries for it.
So again, at this point, nobody has approached the village in regards to any ideas of wanting to, we're just simply looking at it because we talked about it a year ago, and said we'll review it on the thoughts, and when they, when they put more regulations out there, have that spelled out.
Once we knew what they had spelled out, then they have. Just to apply for any form of license is $6,000, and that's just to send them the application, so it...
Sixty.
Six thousand.
Sixty.
I just, well, I just looked on the Michigan website tonight, that's the initial application. For them to read it, it costs $6,000. Doesn't mean they're going to accept it or anything, just for them to read it is $6,000. Then there's another fee, once you submit your next set of paperwork. So the regulations, which we read some over...
From what I understand, this is just from what I understand, how talking to another council person that is enacting the law, it's $60,000 and say, "Get that permit."
That's for the permit, I'm not talking about the permit, I said, the app, an application is that you send in your name with your background information and stuff like that, and for the state to read it and say, "Here, you can fill out this permit," is $6,000. Then when you send this permit in, it's, like you said, $60,000.
$60,000.
And they have to have cameras and all kinds of ventilation and...
They're going to have...
It's a very complex thing, so we haven't had any...
They're going to have $500,000 in equity...
Cash, bond, equity, whatever it is.
To be able to apply. But they have to have $50,000 worth of insurance, and that's, that's before they even start.
Right, it's very, the state has put in place some very good guidelines, and in terms of, for children, you're, they're not going to be able to have things that are designed to look like things that...
Packaging.
Packaging that makes it appear to be candy, so like suckers and the gummy things with children, that a child could accidentally think it looked like candy at a store, okay?
And there's only 23 dispensaries, 23 agencies that are dispensaries in the state of Michigan right now.
Currently, right.
But they're adding more daily, there's more coming on daily.
Right, but they still have to have that kind of a backing to give them all that.
So it's not going to be, the people that are doing it, they have to have all their ducks in a row and follow a lot of regulation to get to that point.
It's more, it's more commercial than anything.
Yeah.
When you start talking $650,000 worth of equity and money, it's not the net guy off the street that's going to start it. Also...
Can you, can you stop talking?
Yeah, take your place.
I don't know that much, but I know, it's just what I heard on radio the other day, which involves Vassar. Vassar just put $20,000 into their park, park, for playground equipment, and this all comes from the money generated from the marijuana sales in their, their community, which is medical marijuana there, right now.
I think they have two or three of them there in Vassar.
Exactly, but this, this is a lump sum, was 20 grand, that, that came back to them. That was the other thing that I had read and heard. Again, takes a lot of money to get there, I don't see anybody jumping in.
But they aren't going to come to a community unless you have ordinance that's in place.
Exactly, exactly. And the state, and the federal government right now has had two, two bills that they had set up to go through to legalize on federal issue, but it's not passed yet. So, basically, it's all boiled down to the states. What some of the other states are, or what Michigan is seeing too, is like Ohio, Indiana, or Illinois does not have, and it's illegal in those states, and they're coming to Michigan to buy, but that's revenue coming in. But just like fireworks, when you go to Ohio or Indiana to buy fireworks and bring it back, it's illegal. So, things to think about, that's all I got, so.
Does anybody know if there's any coming growing facilities there are in Michigan?
Pardon me?
Growing facilities, are there any around? I mean, I know there's one being built on the other side of a city, but, are, in Michigan, do we know how many growing facilities there are?
If you go onto the website, they actually have a state map of all the dispensaries, the growing, there are the security people who actually transport these things, there's companies that are, have made businesses because of that, and on, it'll have a whole state map, and it has like the little symbol of each type of business.
Oh, okay.
And you can click on it, and it'll tell you like the name, their license number, and what sort of thing, cameras.
So, Ed, would you...
I think there was two, was, I think there were one or two growing operations in Michigan at the time, I looked in there.
So if I understand this correctly, we can set up, so we can say, okay, just medical marijuana only, and that's the kind of storefront it will be, or we can go all the way to full recreational, where they sell everything?
Or you can do medical and recreational, with it limited to only, no edibles, you can do recreational with no edibles, so...
Just the dispensary.
Just the dispensary, the oils or the, um, butts or whatever they're called, but they wouldn't have any edibles. You can, you can fine tune what you feel, you want to allow in your community in that
Never in my lifetime did I ever think this would be the topic of conversation. I mean, I lived here all my life, and never, I mean, this town can make it without marijuana, and I don't think, I don't think it's a good thing, and I speak for the party, so, we don't need it, in my opinion.
Well, I'm like, given you're a all-time citizen of Elton, I guess, and I'll expiate, and I'm hoping that you people will listen to the people that are against it. It's better enough the way it is now, even before they made it legal, kids are going to get it from somebody, so it is going to keep happening, even with legal marijuana, it's going to happen, I mean, your neighbors have got it, you don't know who, and then he was talking about somebody smoking and it bothers you. So it's going to happen, because legislature has made it legal, okay? And we cannot change that unless we go ahead and get together and tell our lawmakers to, we're not happy with it, but that ain't going to happen, I guess Colorado and other states have it, and I think it's here to stay like, like liquor, you know what I mean? Just a common thing that happens in America. Some things you can fight, some you can't, but you can still give an opinion, or what you think personally. And I myself think that we don't need any place in Michigan, Elton, to make it easy for people to get stuff, it's just not, I tend to, in my opinion only, I'm not talking for other people. They like to use it, fine, I like beer, vodka, that's not saying that if you can't control your own mind, it's going to cause problems. You have to go in moderation, and hoping that these people that are likely to smoke marijuana can use moderation, but it's going to cause a lot of problems, even a lot of people's lives with fines, because they're not going to obey the law the way it's supposed to be, they're going to be smoking it when it's not supposed to, regardless, it's illegal, you know? You read the papers, there's a lot of people that are paying big fines for, for drinking, drinking and driving, they can't, they can't do it with, without, you know, their mind doesn't let them abstain from it when it's supposed to, they just keep doing it, and that's going to happen, same thing with marijuana, simple as that. And I don't know if you, people understand what I'm saying, because I, sometimes I don't know how to speak and talk, but I'm against it, totally, in my town, we do not need anything like that. My kids are all grown, I got grandkids coming up, and I worry about the kids that are here in town too, simple as that, that's my opinion, I hope you understand what I'm saying.
Okay.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. I just want to let you guys know, I had, I just spoke to a friend of mine who works in a courthouse in another county.
Oh, there's one thing I forgot, you know, we're talking about making it legal, why can't the legislature figure out how to dispense the medical marijuana, supposedly it's called, it's helping some people that have a lot of problems medically, but why can't it go through the doctors? Let them prescribe it, and let the...
Pharmacy.
Dry places dispense it.
Go to the pharmacy, right?
Instead of having a place in town.
And that's the other thing, is that the dispense, if you had a dispensary, it could be just medical, because they can't do it at the pharmacy, it doesn't have to have recreational, or ordinance, it could just be medical.
Well, you can't do it now, but it could be changed if a lot of people decide that they want to...
Right, but right now medically, the only place they can get it from is a dispensary, yes.
But it could be changed.
That would have to be done at the state level.
Dispense it like any other medication.
Right.
From the doctor to the drugstore.
I have a question.
My friend that works at the courthouse in another county said, "Do you think it was bad with just all the DUIs coming through there?" She said, "You ought to see the mess they got." And she said, "You can't, you, if you pull somebody over, there's no test for them." But she said, "The court cases have just gone over the roof."
I bet you look at their eyes.
But by the, just by the same token, if it's legalized, then they can smoke it anyway, it doesn't matter, you could, this town could be beer, wine, liquor-free, but it ain't going to make any difference.
No, no, I just thought I'd tell you fair game.
Okay, because they're going to get it from someplace else and use it, okay? The only difference between not having it as legal and having it as illegal, is you're going to, you're going to get some revenue from it.
What kind of, I mean, that's what I've never been really around.
Well, it varies, it varies, from what I understand, it's a tax like it is for your gas, okay? There's a certain percentage that you're going to get back, back to the community, but it is, I don't know.
Phyllis has some information on that, she was, I need to share, so now would be a great time to do that. I'm sorry, Deb, I know you're waiting to speak.
I, I actually only have a question.
Oh, okay, well, go ahead.
Oh, I was just asking about the fact that, um, it's my understanding that it is not FDA-approved at this point, is that true?
Correct.
And that's at a federal level?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, in Michigan, we do have a 10% excise tax on it, that is, on top of your regular 6% tax, and then they have the breakdown on the second page of where the money actually goes.
Do they say how much it is?
Nope, they do not.
Isn't it portion by...
There's no way to really tell right now, because basically, the 15% goes to the municipalities, but all the money goes into a pool, and it's not even going to be dispersed for the first two years. So you get your amount of money from that pool of the 15%, based on how many stores you would have in your community. So say Pinconning, they've got probably, what, five? And so they would get a bigger portion than you would if we had just one, so there's no way to tell.
So who's going to, who's going to set the price on how much people pay for those for it?
That I don't know, I don't know if there's a regulation on price setting or not.
Are you referring to like, like the alcohol pricing, like where the state sets a level that it has to be, is that what you're asking, Deb?
Actually, it's, because cigarettes, you know, a pack of cigarettes, very little of the money is for the actual cigarette itself, the majority of that money is taxed.
Tax, no question.
And so I guess that was my question, so if you go in to purchase your marijuana, is that going to be government-regulated, and are they going to set a price that you're going to have to get this much money to pay the taxes alone, and then your profit after that?
It appears as though it's your 6% sales tax plus the addition of the 10% based on selling price.
And that's it.
The dispensary determines the price.
So then of that 10%, 15% of that 10% then goes to the municipality?
It could be divided amongst all the...
All the municipalities. The ones that don't have it.
No, just the ones who have it.
Oh, just the ones that have it.
It's just the municipalities that have it, so it's not with the ones that don't have it, it's only the ones that have it. And then if, the only other income would be, I think, property tax, is if the building then, something was in, if it increased the value, so it would increase property tax.
Of that 10%, just, I guess, to kind of finish what Phyllis was saying there, 15% goes into what you just said on that part, 15% to the counties in which marijuana retail store or microbusinesses are located, allocated portion of the number of stores that basically have in that county, so similar to the municipality. And 35% goes to the schools to be used for K through 12 education, and 35% goes to fix the roads.
I'm serious, that's what it says.
But none of that money gets dispersed, so they pay back the general fund, because they took money from the state general fund to make up the Marijuana Regulatory Act. They have to pay back all that money first, and plus they've dedicated, um, $20 million annually for clinical trials to the FDA, for trials.
Probably never going to set up that money.
I think it was 10 million goes back to the, to the other thing, to the second thing.
The 20 million is for clinical, clinical trials that are approved by the FDA.
Trials, and I think veterans get like 10 million too, I, it was, it...
That's, yep, this is what the research is for, for...
Would you say 10 million, veterans? I heard it on the radio this morning, so I'm going like...
The veterans?
Yeah, it starts out with 20 million, goes back to the FDA, or whatever it is, for research.
Only for clinical trials that are approved by the FDA, so at university...
Whatever, I heard on the radio, so, you know.
Yeah, so, it's only if the FDA approved it, so that's all that...
And then, speaking to the revenue portion too, Dave mentioned Vassar, there, there is some stipulation in the rules, that you, your licensing fee, or whatever so to speak, it's not just an arbitrary number, you have to, it has to be relative to the village's expenses, as far as administration, enforcement...
They have a separate fee than the state one that he was talking about.
Yeah, so, we, we can't just charge a $20,000 fee per business just to put money in the general fund, we have to demonstrate that that is relative to our actual expenses in administration.
In Germany, but Scott did mention that it, it can relate to what the department, your police department has to use towards, you know, making sure things are secure and safe and things like that, too.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement, yes.
Yeah. And also another tip, they, for the first three weeks in December, when it went into effect, they sold 4.3 million dollars worth of marijuana in Michigan.
So I have a question, and I'm learning here myself, so say, they allow a dispensary to come in, whatever, whatever level, I don't care, does it have to be in its own building, or say, could a current business, party store, whatever, who's already in business, pay all this, and then put a corner of their store of this?
It has to be a secure, separate... Standalone location with all this security systems in place.
So just in your model, of what you just said in that timeframe, the 10% that would get allocated back, and then the 15% that would actually go to the municipality, and then split up however you want it, but there'd be a pool of $38,000 that would go back to the municipality, and if that gets split, it's somebody said Pinconning here, 23 ways. Just so people have an idea, we're talking about dollars, even, you say 4.3 million, that's a big number, but when you actually look at what that brings in...
That's in three weeks.
Yeah, so a month, well, yeah, whatever your...
So you're talking a million dollars a week, basically.
Do we want Elton to be the place where you go get your marijuana?
Yeah, they're going to get it.
But we, does it have to be in Elton?
But we, does it have to be in Elton?
It doesn't have to be.
Do you have to sell beer, no?
You know, there's every, pretty much all the surrounding municipalities have, have enacted the same ordinance that we did, prohibiting, you know, the establishment of, of these dispensaries in their, in their.
Caseville, I think, passed medical dispensary. Caseville, I believe, is going to start working on an ordinance for.
They're doing recreational too.
I don't think the recreational is passed. I believe it was only medical to start. I could be wrong.
But to, to follow that logic again, I've talked to a few people that, that feel, again, the users are going to purchase it wherever they're going to purchase it. We have a lot of vacant buildings downtown here. They, you know, their point to be made was, and I don't agree or not, that's not to build. You know, maybe we could put something in one of our businesses, maybe we could bring people into town, maybe they'll stop it, station and buy gas when they come to buy their marijuana. A lot of maybes, but that is an argument that had been presented by at least two people in the news. They're going to get it somewhere, so why not Elton? But to that point, a lot of people here that's saying, we don't.
Why Elton?
Right, right.
You could put a Hooters in too. It would bring in a lot.
Right.
But is that the reputation?
And it doesn't have to be recreation. It can be just medical. It doesn't have to be both. It doesn't, I mean, it's not, it can be whatever you wish.
So if you get just one level, I mean, is that fif, is it flat 15% no matter what you do, or is it different by the level of what you love?
Doesn't appear to be.
Does that make sense?
It appears to be.
Based off of Dave, based off of Dave's math on what, just what he said about the four, you take that out, you do a whole year, and that was 23 dispensaries. Each one of those municipalities would get $48,000 to split amongst, I think, however you want to figure. That was across, you know, the whole thing, for a whole year, for the whole state of Michigan.
So 48,000 would be divided by all the municipalities?
No, 48,000 is.
It's 1.1 million.
There was only 23 dispensaries, and they did that same sales, then each municipality, if it was split.
That wasn't based off 23, which is.
On 23 of them.
But that's assuming, that's assuming one per jurisdiction too. The actual formula means, like you said, Pinconning.
That's a high number, that's why.
Pinconning.
That's a very high number, is what it's going to be.
But if they, and we don't know what they're, how they're doing it. So if it, like your math shows 48,000, so if one municipality had three, does that mean they get 48,000 three times?
They would get, they would get three times what.
Well.
Because we don't know their formula. Yeah, no, it says based on, no, it's based on the number you, it says it's based on the number you have in your, in your municipality.
Right, but based on what your income is.
No, no, it's not.
It all gets moved in a pool.
It's just based off of 10% of it all goes into a pool. I base it off of the 23 municipalities that we, that were said to have, be able to.
So like Bay County debt probably has, feels like 11 of the 23.
It's not 23 municipalities, it's 23.
Facilities.
Facilities.
Okay.
23 facilities.
Keep in mind, those 23 are strictly recreational. Not medical.
Right.
There's thousands of medical.
Right.
Well, everybody knows my passion for quoting. There's a coast in Bay City that you can't get a parking place anymore because on the other end of the building is a medical, or a marijuana dispenser.
Right.
You can't even park in the parking lot.
Sure you can. I was there yesterday.
So just, nobody has a dispensary.
Well, one guy wandered in.
Sorry, the other day I was waiting for your pass.
Yeah, that's just, we're not reversing, confusing the two between them.
Right, this is recreational. That's the only thing I came here to talk about tonight, because that's the ordinance we're reviewing, is the recreational one.
The medical portion, just so we all know, has nothing to do with it.
Totally different than we have any research.
Right.
My name's Ian Gray. I'm a pastor of the local church here in Combe, Community Wesleyan Church. It's a church that also offers a program called Celebrate Recovery, a program that's going on right now. I've walked with those families where their, their husband, their spouse became addicted. It started with something small and it got bigger. I've seen the lives that have been wrecked. I've, myself, come from family where both sides of my family are alcoholics. So I've seen how chemical dependence can ruin lives. There's no denying the fact that there can be medicinal reasons for marijuana, people that can't handle actual opioids in their system. But what we're talking about tonight is the idea of putting a dispensary in our town. I did talk to the mayor, Mr. Haley, we discussed it in line one night, and it seems that there is some interest from some people, and whether it's that just, just talk back and forth, but there would be, from what I understand, an interest in putting in a dispensary. As we talk about money, scripture says that "The love of money is root of all evil." And as we talk about that, let's remember that the love of money is the root of all evil. Jesus is speaking in Mark, chapter eight, verse 36, and he says, "And what is it benefit if you gain the whole world and lose your own soul?" What good would it do is to gain the publicity of being one of the only ones in Huron County and lose everything except for a small hometown. As we look at Colorado, people like to talk about Colorado, and stats are staggering. In Colorado, youth marijuana use is the nation's highest, 74% above the national average. I drive a school bus at Lakers. I had a girl use a vape pen in the back of my bus one day, and Tom, his dad, calling me out and says, "You got girls vaping in your bus?" And I'm like, "What are you talking about?" We had to look and find the film. And as much as we talk about edibles and that they can't be allowed, my brother, my mom lives in Colorado, pulled his son out of school because he was coming home with gummy bear THC's in his backpack. And so we can talk about this, we can kick it around and say that it's not a gateway drug, but the fact is that we all know that it leads to more things, just like peer pressure, we all experience that. And so I saw in the paper that Caseville's talking about putting in two dispensaries. Let them deal with it. Three days after the one in Ann Arbor opened, or a couple days later, they were held up with three armed robbers, and they'd taken undisclosed amount of money and they took off. When I was talking to Mr. Haley, he had said that there were some jobs that would be created. Three of them would be full-time, three full-time security guards. That would be the biggest red flag for me, knowing that something in our town has to have three full-time security guards, and we have a police officer who's works a standard 40-hour week, and he's not there 24 hours a day. And so I'd written a bunch, and then I got to hear what everybody was saying, and I guess it comes down to, is this something that we want to have in our community, or is this only going to bring more issues? And, I mean, we had to celebrate recovery in the air, because when I moved here, I was reading the paper about young people, and I was reading their own literatures. And I thought, how did this all begin? How did this all start? One of my best friends when I was in high school, I watched as he began smoking dope, he went on to do cocaine, and he spent five years in prison because he was on LSD and beat a little boy almost to death. And that's not everybody's picture, I get that. The fact is that the love of money is the root of all evil. And if we're talking about this because it's going to bring jobs and bring money, we need to check ourselves before we wreck ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Speak the truth.
We're looking for anybody else that would wish to speak.
Hello, I'm Lisa Stanton. I just had a question. We've talked about percentages and, you know, taxes that it could bring in, and my question is, for these other communities that already have it, Pinconning or Vassar or wherever these happen to be, and again, I'm not for or against, I'm just curious. Knowing how much is sold is one thing, but are there any other things that these communities have noticed, have they noticed an upswing in other businesses, you know, flow through other businesses? Have they noticed an upswing in, you know, negative things in their community? Is there anything that anyone has heard as far as studies?
This is, in terms of recreational, that's only been, only since November 1st.
November 1st.
Even the first license revenue they're going to get, I assume.
The first, they weren't even issued till December, right? The first licenses weren't even issued till December.
But valid questions, Lisa.
No, without a doubt.
As I said, there's a lot of one ifs or maybe.
I mean, that doesn't necessarily mean even here, but in Colorado, wherever, I mean, is there anything that anyone has seen, an upswing, anything, negative or positive?
That's a good question.
No, that is a very good question.
So, right now we have just 23 dispensaries in Michigan. That's just the recreational, that's what we're talking about. Beyond that is the medical, and we don't really have a number on that.
Lots.
Okay, so that lot plus the 23, do all those, the lots and the 23 equal the one, the million that you said is made in one week, or they're just recreational with the million? Do they not?
The recre, it was.
Yeah, it's recreational.
It's recreational.
Who's the million?
Is there a medical dispensary in Huron County?
No.
A city that's closest?
A city that's closest.
But they're also claiming, the ones that are getting the medical are passing it on to the other people too. They're using a medical card. Only then buying it, they're passing it on.
What would the purpose of that be though, if recreational is legal?
Well, if, no, no, I'm just saying the medical, if you do not have recreational, okay? If they're passing it on to other individuals, you're going back and getting it anyway. Just like somebody buying booze, same difference.
Well, the only good thing if they're passing medical, it doesn't have high THC, so.
Yeah.
But that's what statistics are saying.
And I guess from that, if you can just walk down the street and go get it, how quickly are you going to be to turn around and pass it off? Whereas if you have to travel a ways to go get it, how quickly are you to pass out your medical to somebody else? Because then you have to get yourself back to that place, I guess is my thought.
So you're going to, if you pass this, you're going to put a sign out on each edge of town, "Welcome to Elton, we have marijuana."
I mean, there's nothing to pass right now. Honestly, I can't see anything being ready to be passed for a long time. We're just talking about it because it is, we had said we would talk about it again.
It's something that we agreed to doing a year ago, so we're following through with what we said we would do.
And we asked for public input, and overwhelmingly, I think the public input tonight has shown a feeling one-sided.
I would just like to make one more comment too, and I really appreciate the fact that you have made this an open forum to the public to get their input. That's great.
And on that note, the ordinance committee, we, early on, said that we really needed input from the community. Before we even wanted to delve into this, it wasn't something that Gail and Randy and I really thought that we could do justice without the input from the community, so.
I don't see anyone opening up with 650,000.
No. Alfred.
So what I'm hearing tonight, we're here for discussion. Do people want to be taking any action for or against tonight?
No.
No.
Or the foreseeable future, honestly. Even, I can't see us doing anything for the foreseeable future. We just want an input.
This, this does simply, right, for you to come voice your opinion, how yes or no, or what direction you would, you would want to see something to go.
Again, the ordinance committee did not want to put the time and money into drafting a sample ordinance to bring to council for approval without knowing if it was something that was even viable. We could have easily spent thousands of dollars drafting an ordinance that never made it past the A of us up here. So this was a feedback to know if, if we needed to proceed.
I think it's important for us to have input from the community, which is why when we said last December that we would meet again to discuss it, because nobody knew what was going to happen when they passed the law in Michigan. So I think that it's very, I'm really glad to see that people did come to share their input too.
And again, in, in enacting the ordinance last year, again, that wasn't really based on any of our opinions. We were advised by municipal attorneys, the Michigan Municipal League, that because the state had not framed up the regulations and the guidelines, to put an ordinance in place so that we didn't end up with a situation where we had a business that was established, and then we wanted them gone. You end up with lawsuits and all kinds of ugly stuff there. So they recommended that we quick, put an ordinance in place, then get our ducks in a row.
And wait for the state.
Which is what we've done with the state, you know, put, put their program together. Again, give us the opportunity now to, to get the opinion of, of the residents, so it, you know, that, we didn't, none of us, I think, were really strongly opposed to it a year ago necessarily. We just did what we had to do to, to make sure things were done properly.
Did I read on the paper, right, that actually the people that want to smoke their stuff, they can actually grow so many plants on their own?
Yeah, they can grow 12 plants. Anybody in Elton, anybody in the state of Michigan can grow 12 plants, but they have to be out of view from the general public, so you can't do it in your front yard.
I read all that, yeah.
And they can share what they get from it. So they can keep 10 ounces, I believe it's 10 ounces for personal use on them, but the extra, they're allowed to share with people, but they can't sell it. They can give it for free only.
So we actually don't, don't need a dispenser then? Make for your own?
Right.
Well, it's ours.
If you want to smoke it, you can.
But in terms of saying that, it's, either way, people in the community can get, have access to it and smoke it outside, and then you can't open your windows, because it is legal in Michigan.
Floor is open. Anybody else wishing to make a comment?
I gotta make this say something. My name's Dwayne Keller. I'm an Elton resident, and I'm also a member of the Elton Community Club. And, you know, I have mixed feelings about this as well. I've been following the medical marijuana very closely since I've lived in Michigan, since it was approved. Recreational is very new. You know, I, I feel that there's legitimate people who go to a doctor, and the doctors prescribe medication, which is marijuana, and I, I personally just feel that those people, and not even recreational, but those people should have their access to your medicine locally. You know, if I were to get a recommendation from a doctor, I've got to drive to Bay City now to get my medication, and I don't agree with it. Why can't I get my medication within limits? You know, a dispensary is just like a pharmacy. There's no difference. It's people with a valid script going to a building, getting your medication, and taking it home and using it responsibly. I understand there's problems with public smelling it, but you know what? I'm sorry, times have changed, you know? I think it's condescending to say we can't have a dispensary here, whether it's recreational or medical, when there's plenty of places in town to buy alcohol and cigarettes. It all comes down to being a responsible adult, you know? I mean, I, I'm not very happy hearing all the negativity about it. Times have changed. I mean, if you don't like it, I'm sorry. But people voted on it, and people have spoken. It's here and it's not gone. You know, if they don't get the medication here in Elton, or Caseville, or Cassidy, or, they're going to get it somewhere. You can grow plants for crying out loud, you know? Unfortunately, not all of us can. So I think there should be a place, a safe place, for medical card rules, and if people choose to do a recreational, we should have access to it. There's no reason why anybody should have to drive an hour to get medication. It's, it's, it's not, it's not, it's not fair. No difference in alcohol, no difference, as long as it's used responsibly. I do disagree with people driving, driving and using it. I mean, I have morals and values too, you know? It should be used properly, but I feel that people should have access to them, instead of everybody being so against it.
I've seen people get off the line, get involved in sharing.
Thank you.
Then I see all the eyes on you.
That's right. What's your name?
Sherry.
Thanks.
But I've seen the benefits, I've seen people that have got off of major opiates and major drugs using marijuana. I've seen babies quit having seizures because they've been given marijuana. I've seen cancer patients that now get to eat and get more healthier because of medical. So if it is better than your chemicals, why not? If it's helping and showing improvement, why not? Anything that you put out there, people are going to share. They're going to share their alcohol, they're going to share their drugs, they're going to share this. But if you allow a dispensary, it's. But if you allow a dispensary, it's also gonna benefit. But you have to decide if that's what you want. Do you want people growing it in their basements and you're not seeing anything from it and still dealing with it? Or do y'all wanna have control over it to some level?
Just real quick, tonight we're talking about a recreational dispensary, we're not talking about a medical dispensary, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct, but it does help, from what I've read, there are some medical conditions that people would, can't access medical, like mental health illness, because there hasn't been a lot of research. But there is some support that it does help with mental illness. But because it doesn't fall under where, where a doctor can prescribe medical marijuana, they have to use recreational marijuana for it, because of that. So there is some cases where people using it responsibly because they aren't eligible for, uh, medical marijuana.
But I think the feedback too, regarding the medical, is, it's important to us too.
Without a doubt.
Because we could be, you know, looking at regulations and allowing a, a medical establishment and at some point.
Without a doubt.
So, though the majority of, of tonight's meetings pertain to the recreational side of it, um, to hear that there are some people here that support just the medical properties of it, that does tell us that there may be, you know, some support there if, if we were to cross that bridge or face that bridge sometime down the road. So that, I mean, those discussions are valuable too.
And I don't know if people are aware, but recreational marijuana dispensaries are only allowed to sell a certain THC content, so it's not as high as medical. There seems to be a lot of confusion with that. And, but it's true, but I, I guess there's different levels of, recreational is only allowed to sell exorbitant THC versus somebody who has a medical card who may need someone stronger for different purposes, you know?
I, recreational is one ounce.
What?
One ounce, recreational.
One ounce what? You mean quantity?
Yeah.
That you can buy at a time?
As, as, as recreational.
THC is a percentage. There's CBD and THC, like the, marijuana, medical marijuana that helps seizures has very low THC but has high CBD.
Yeah.
And that's what they make the oils out of and things like that. And so that's not a, um, it's a percentage, the THC.
Can only, it can't exceed three point nine percent.
Okay, well, you, that was different than the one ounce, so I was confused.
Anything, anything over four percent marijuana.
Right, which people who are growing it in their basement, you, they don't know the THC levels.
Modern urine tonight, it is, uh, a problem to get medical marijuana in Huron County, there's no places in Huron County?
No.
You have to go to Bay City. Well, my opinion still is that we don't have to be the ones to deploy it, simple as that. Maybe I got a one track mind, but, well, I have opinions.
Who prescribes medical marijuana?
A licensed doctor.
Any medical doctor.
If a medical doctor's prescribing, I can do the prescription.
It's not for a prescription, it's a recommendation that they can do. It's only a recommendation that they can give, they can't prescribe it because it's illegal.
At the federal level, nor is it.
That's why it's not in a pharmacy, that's why they can't have it in a pharmacy. It's not a technical prescription, it's not a legal prescription. It's a state prescription.
So you can, here this medical marijuana card, you walk in someone and say, "My doctor says or suggests I smoke this."
Yeah, it's, because it's, the states that have allowed medical marijuana, they're basically, it's like a medical, um, a state prescription. It's only valid at the state level.
Right.
Because the state says, you have to have a doctor that says you need this. But you can't get it at a pharmacy because a pharmacy only dispenses federally approved drugs. So a pharmacy has federal regulations to follow, medical dispensary has state laws to follow.
I, I feel that eventually there will be a place in Huron County, but it doesn't have to be Elton. And, uh, I'm sure that one of the bigger places in the area will, will have one shortly because it's legal.
Oh, it sounds like Casville.
Yep.
So if you're having a problem now, maybe in the future you won't.
Casville's gonna allow two.
To what, recreational?
Medical.
Medical, I'm talking medical.
No, I, I didn't know what Casville was allowing.
I don't believe Casville has got the recreational they ask for, as far as I know they have.
They got their ordinance wrote, they haven't got it passed yet.
You know, that's another thing to look at too, you know, there's a huge difference between rec and medical. You know, if you have rec, anybody can walk in and buy, that's eighteen and older.
Twenty-one.
I apologize, twenty, yeah, twenty-one and older. And, um, medical, you know, you have to have a card, I mean, there's a lot more footwork to it, so it's not gonna be as much traffic or people. You know, there's a big difference between rec and medical. You know?
So I know we're talking about recreational, but what would the benefit, obviously from recreational, there's a tax benefit that comes to this, is medical done the same?
There's a kind of same excise tax with rec, not medical.
But then does it follow the same pattern as, was this the same?
No.
You'd be, you'd be looking at your personal property tax, uh, facility and things of that nature, um, for any benefit to the village, I guess.
Is cigarettes called an excise tax too?
State tax, excise tax, and then they charge sales tax on the tax.
Right, that's, right, yes, because you can like, you can charge tax.
Kind of like gas is like that too. They charge a tax on the tax.
If you say that medical marijuana has to be, that has to be recreational, are, uh, all of this.
Is anybody else had a public comment?
You know what I mean, Republican.
So, a- again, uh, if, if the ordinance committee takes no action, council takes no action, you know, the, the ordinance stands as is prohibiting the, uh, operation of medical or recreational marijuana dispensaries and the laws about them. That's not to say though, that this discussion couldn't be had down the road again. If, you know, times change, people change their mind in, in two or three years, if we, you know, see, if we push for, for such thing to happen.
Right.
You know, laws, laws are subject to change, so.
And I will, if, if something comes up, we would, I personally would support public hearing before we acted on anything in the future.
So the vote that was taken, just to, for the last point, when they broke down, did, does it break down despite county, I don't remember all that at all.
I asked, Phil, it's just a few minutes ago, should you remember?
Huron County and Elton did not want to legalize marijuana.
The numbers supported the, the, um, promise that they did not wish to legalize it.
Okay.
But again, we were concerned that now that it was legalized, that maybe the residents would support having dispensaries here for those few potential benefits that may have come out of it. But again, it's overwhelmingly tonight, looks like it's, it's not good.
I wish we could have seen more people though from, from the village here, you know, I mean, we got some and I'm glad everybody came, but I would have liked to see a lot more.
I'm surprised you did.
Uh, me too.
But on that note, and that, that applies to every, every meeting we have and everything we discuss. It was great to have people speak tonight.
And I don't know if it's overwhelming, because when I look at my notes, I would say that the people who are against it may have spoke louder than the people that maybe were indifferent or felt if the regulations were correctly put into place or felt people could be responsible kind of thing. So I think that it's a injustice to say that.
Yeah, but we're getting an opinion from the people that are in the room, we're not gonna get an opinion from the whole council.
I understand, no, but he said overwhelmingly, and I'm saying from the numbers, but it's all.
Okay, so I heard, I heard nobody say they wanted to do it. I heard, I heard a lot of them are different or against, so with, with that, um.
If we're taking the opinion of the people in the room tonight, I feel.
Well, I felt, there was people though that did say, if there were certain limitations in place. So I just would like that acknowledged, because some people didn't say they were totally against it in the village.
But I guess, I wish those people would have come forward or wrote a letter or.
They said it in, in this meeting tonight, there were people that did say that tonight.
I'm saying the outside of this.
Oh, I wish we could have gotten a lot more people, without a doubt.
Right, those who didn't come tonight.
Oh, I'm not talking about them, I'm only talking about people in the room.
Right, right, yeah.
I read a lot of Facebook comments here during this meeting, it's a shame that all those people that are not here.
Those are usually the ones, they're only on Facebook.
And they're within their sixties, so you can hope this is.
No, I, I've lived.
They, it's also our welcome to subletters too, uh, again, for anybody that's interested in, in any other, anytime there's an issue going on, if you can't make it to the meeting, get a letter and Phil will put it on record. As, as to your.
I think everybody had a valid opinion tonight.
I did, I, I really appreciated it a great deal. Yes, I'd like to get home and watch Jeopardy.
Chris, call for a vote.
Gail is, um, recreational marijuana different than, uh, medical marijuana.
How so? Yes.
There's strength flows and the amount you can need because it's, it's, yes, it's very complicated.
Oh, okay, I just didn't know it, I like to know this.
Yes.
See, otherwise you just become out of, of what you know.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I feel it's, it's legal to grow it, you know, you don't have to use a specimen.
I, I, my personal feelings, I agree almost as that, yeah, with, I can't remember your name, I did write. No, not Freddie. That, um, alcohol causes more problems I see in families than I've seen marijuana cause. I've been, I'm undecided in terms of how I feel about it, because it is new, it's a new law, it's a new change. I, I grew up in alcoholic home and I've known people who have smoked marijuana and I've seen more damage from the alcoholics that never smoked marijuana and are appalled at people who do than I have from people who smoke marijuana. So I'm very torn and undecided, that's my personal opinion. I don't feel strongly, but I'm undecided at this time.
Make a mushroom that we've done.
Call for a vote.
Popper bolt. All in favor?
All in favor, say aye. Sorry.